There we go. Welcome to the 5:30 PM, April 23rd, 2024 Presentation City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. The first agenda item that we have tonight is under special recognitions and presentation. It's the Employee of the Month. It's Kat Caldwell from the Finance Department. This is for April, and Terry, if you would present, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. How are you this evening?
Good.
I just wanted to let you know I'm very proud of Catherine Caldwell. She is our accounts payable specialist in the Finance Department. Over the past six months, Ms. Caldwell has been challenged with several tasks, one of which is to start a campaign to actively recruit vendors to sign up for electronic payment. This is versus the paper check, which, as you know, a paper check is far more expensive. Ms. Caldwell created a small flyer with pertinent information on it. This is, as you can see it clearly, as to what the benefits are for our vendors to sign up for electronic payment. As a result, to date, Ms. Caldwell has successfully recruited over forty vendors to sign up for electronic payment, saving the city approximately fifty dollars for each future check that this vendor will receive from the city. In addition to the continued cost savings, the process created much efficiency in the overall cash reconciliation process and reduced the risk of fraud to both the vendor and the city. Another combined task that Ms. Caldwell was asked to perform was to create a better way to manage the city's cash flows as related to accounts payable vendors while still adhering to the Florida Prompt Payment Act. Ms. Caldwell created a spreadsheet to determine the timeliness of the payments and the invoices by using the invoice date or the receipt date to better determine when the invoice should be paid. As a result, this better manages the city's cash flow, leaving more funds in the city's bank account and increasing interest income. To date, we have increased the city's interest income approximately forty thousand dollars since this began. So for these reasons, the continued cost savings to the city and because of the increased interest went to recognize Ms. Catherine Caldwell.
Do I speak for anything like that?
No.
No. Well, thank you very much. How long you been doing this? Have we just talked about that?
I was here fifteen.
Fifteen years. How long you had to spend? Fifteen more? Okay. Here, congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
You could just stand by, Mayor. This is a proclamation for the Water Conservation Month of April 2024. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read an official proclamation of the City of Titusville, Florida, whereas water is a basic and essential need for every living creature and whereas the state of Florida Water Management Districts and the City of Titusville, Florida are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the City of Titusville and the State of Florida has designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, water, water, Florida's Water Conservation Month, to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the City of Titusville has always encouraged and supported water conservations through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to water conservation. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help by saving water, thus promote a healthy economy and community. And whereas leak prevention is commonly thought of to be the first step of conserving water, the City of Titusville, Florida will encourage citizens and businesses to focus on fixing leaks. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel E. Diesel, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Titusville, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month. And Mayor, we're gonna have our sustainability planner, Ms. Trout, come up and accept it on behalf of the city.
You have to speak. Thank you so much for your appreciation.
Go ahead, sir. And the next item is Item 4C, which is a Fire Department Spotlight. This is the second in a series. We did community development last month. And so if we could roll the community develop, I mean, the Fire Department Spotlight.
Look forward to that. Thank you. I guess I have a minute to introduce the video before it gets it going.
I guess that's what they're doing.
Well, in that case, I do appreciate. Oh, it's going? I'll save that for after the video then.
2023 has continued to be a year of positive growth in Titusville, enabling our fire department resources to meet the needs of a growing community. We have expanded our workforce and received approval for a fifth fire station, Station 14. Located at the south end of the city, Station 14 is under construction and due to become operational by the end of spring 2024. Not only are we growing in population, but we have expanded our training capabilities and internal communications with some new technology. Our purchase of the Ambu Man Advanced Mannequin and the First Arriving I/O Software helps us so we can serve to the highest standard.
Last May, we received a new training mannequin that will take our emergency medical training to a higher level, fulfilling our mission to proactively serve the needs of our community through education, prevention, training, and response. The Ambu Man Advanced is Ambu's latest training mannequin, which is made to fulfill all the needs of advanced life support training. The mannequin enables us to focus on airway management, ECG simulation, defibrillation, and the training of IV and I/O access techniques. We are also able to monitor compression depth, correct hand position, ventilation volume, and stomach inflation. Using Ambu Man Advanced, we can create custom scenarios, making the possibilities endless. This was made possible thanks to grant funding in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-five cents through the State Department of Health Emergency Medical Services Trust Fund.
In the last quarter of 2023, we started using the First Arriving I/O Software. This is a digital dashboard solution tailored specifically for fire and EMS departments. It offers a comprehensive set of tools to enhance operational efficiency, situational awareness, and decision-making capabilities during emergency response operations. The system ties directly into other software programs that we use, displaying information on monitors at each fire station and headquarters, giving us access to the following: real-time incident management, resource tracking and allocation, performance metrics and key performance indicators, weather and traffic data, communication features, and customized alerts. Ultimately, integrating the First Arrival I/O Digital Dashboard into our emergency response operations can significantly enhance our capabilities and effectiveness in serving the community.
This year, we responded to a total of ten thousand seven hundred seventy-one calls. Of those, one hundred forty-eight were fire calls, six thousand eight hundred and eight were medical emergencies, seven hundred and forty-six were false alarms, and two thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven were miscellaneous calls. All of these calls had an average response time of four minutes and forty-five seconds.
As the number of residents and visitors continue to increase, so has the demand for fire and life safety prevention. The fire marshal and inspectors have reviewed a total of eight hundred and sixty-four plans, one hundred and fifty-two preliminary inspections, one hundred and seventy-six new construction inspections, and installed three hundred and forty-one residential smoke detectors.
With the pace of new construction, the need for additional fire inspectors became apparent, resulting in two of our lieutenants and one of our driver operators receiving their inspector certification. Together, they have performed over seven hundred inspections on commercial properties.
The demand for engine displays and fire and life safety presentations allowed us to reach over twelve thousand people through two hundred events, checked thirty-eight child passenger seats, assisted fifty people with new child passenger seats, fitted a hundred and two bicycle helmets, and logged ninety-nine hours of assistance from our amazing community volunteers.
Last year was filled with milestones and accomplishments for many of our employees. We are proud of our employees and the service they provide to the community.
2023 was full of achievements, and we sincerely thank our city leadership, elected officials, and those in our community who take an active interest in moving toward a positive future.
Well, thank you. Thank you for watching. We've had a lot going on this year, and that video kind of sums it up for us. Before I go too far into that, because I will forget, I do really want to thank Curtis Corwin, and I know Will Petty also had a lot to do with making the video. And the voices you heard in there were Kerry Lubeski and Kyle Mack. For three years now, they've done a really great job doing that, so. But yeah, that's, that's what we've been up to this year. We've had a lot of growth, a lot of things changing, the new fire station, a lot of new technology coming in. And if you got any questions for me?
I would just say, first of all, great presentation, and it goes with the great job that you guys do all the time. I saw several examples up there of some of the relationship building you do, which I think is one of the most important things we do, you know, with the Fire Department, the Police Department. Overall, every year, I probably am a little surprised at how many medical emergencies you guys answer. So again, hats off to you. I've done some ride-alongs on occasion, and we've done everything from transporting a heart patient from the doctor's office to the hospital. And we've actually gone in where somebody had fallen down, and they were a hoarder, and they couldn't get out. So that was interesting. But that being said, there's so many responses you do and so many, some variety. And I appreciate the way you answer all of them, and I appreciate that very much. Remember Nelson?
And I was just gonna say, thank you for sending Kerry out in the public. She gets mobbed. I'm just amazed. She was at the car show. I don't know if you guys saw her.
I did see her. Yep.
But yeah, they had a steady stream of people asking questions. It was great. So thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, again, thank you. From the church perspective, we've had several programs that you guys came along and did a stellar job in doing a presentation, and I want to thank you for that. And I have one question. I saw that the new test dummy, I'm maybe using the wrong phraseology.
Mannequin?
Yeah. You gave, gave it a shot. You know, you injected something. What was that? How does that work? And could you give me kind of a, just an insight? Because that's so interesting now that you can practice on, you know, a mannequin type of person and learn from that.
Yeah, so it's actually, it's an IV. So it's a needle that goes into the vein of a patient. But this mannequin's equipped to be able to practice on. So you can start an IV on it. It has a simulated vein inside, and you can actually put medication in there, too.
No, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty advanced.
If you come back next year and it has a heart, I'm gonna be concerned.
I wouldn't be surprised.
Thank you very much.
Remember Cole?
Yeah, you should even be more surprised if it has a brain. I've had the opportunity to witness some of you guys in action, and I've really been totally impressed. I think the four minutes and forty-five second response time is something that you should be very, very proud of. I've been a part of other fire departments in the military. We didn't have that kind of response time, but I really appreciate it. And as one of the senior citizens in Titusville, I'm glad that you have the medical training that you do. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much.
Remember Nelson?
Can I say, they usually beat Brevard County to the scene, which is great.
I'm not in the business of being competitive, but facts are facts.
Right. And that just means they need to step up their game.
Congratulations to you and the entire team. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. We have a great team, yeah.
City Manager.
Onto Item 4D, which is the Implementation of the Sustainability Action Plan Goals and Objectives from April 2023 to 2024. On April 25th, 2023, the City of Titusville Council, City Council voted to adopt the city's first Sustainability Action Plan. In order to ensure that this plan is properly implemented, staff will present an annual update on the status of accomplishments and implementation efforts of this, of this Sustainability Action Plan. And Abigail's here again.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Abigail Trout. I'm the Sustainability Planner here with the City of Titusville. I'll just jump into the presentation here. Let's see. So the creation of the Sustainability Action Plan, I'll refer to it as the SAP in this presentation, was a multi-phased project that involved community engagement, collaborative departmental communication, and ambitious goal setting. City Council directed staff to develop the SAP to better understand current and future challenges, to be better equipped to make smart and innovative decisions here with the city. So the basis of the Sustainability Action Plan, you need to know what sustainability really is. So in 1987, the United Nations Brundtland Commission defined sustainability as meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. And so with that definition, the SAP identifies six focus areas for the principles of sustainability to be applied. You have community and livability, ecosystems and resiliency, infrastructure and energy, water, smart growth, and sustainable economy. These six focus areas form the city's strategy for prioritizing and meeting sustainability goals. And this is based off of the three pillars of sustainability, which are the environment, social aspects, and the economy. A sustainable approach seeks to understand the interactions which exist among environmental, social, and economic pillars. So with that being said, I'll dive into community and livability and what we have done so far in the past year since adopting this plan. We have started the Natural Resources Comp Plan Public Engagement Project. The city has hired a consultant to assist us, Inspire. This project is seeking public input on local environmental concerns to direct draft policies, goals, and objectives primarily found within the conservation element of our comprehensive plan. This consists of in-person interviews with our Titusville Environmental Commission members. Those were conducted on April 18th. And will lead into some public open houses, which will happen in May and July. We will also have a workshop with the Environmental Commission in June. And we will look to produce a report by September for these directing draft policies, goals, and objectives for the comp plan. We also have the focus area of ecosystems and resiliency. We have done a number of projects to implement some of the objectives in this focus area, starting off with the Resilient Florida Planning Grant. This was a grant with the FTEP, Resilient Florida Planning Program that they have there. So they have planning grants and implementation grants. So we went for the planning grant this time to conduct a vulnerability assessment to reevaluate critical facilities and propose capital improvement strategies and projects. So this comprehensive vulnerability assessment will include an adaptation plan that includes public outreach and stakeholder engagement, a final report along with a list of critical and regionally significant assets that are susceptible to flooding, sea level rise, and other environmental shocks and stressors will be identified with this project. We also have a project that we did in one of our local parks here. At Sandpoint Park, we worked with the Brevard Zoo's Restore Our Shores Program to install a ninety-six-foot buffer zone. We planted dune sunflower, kunti palm, seaside goldenrod, blue porterweed, and many other native plants here. This buffer zone acts as a space between the sea wall at the park and the parking lot to actually prevent the cutting of lawns and the cuttings getting into the river with potential fertilizers to increase total nitrogen and total phosphorus presence in the river. So this buffer zone acts as a filtration and buffer for stormwater runoff into the Indian River Lagoon. We also just had the Earth Day event at another one of our parks. At the Space View Park, on Monday, we celebrated Earth Day along with a ribbon cutting of the pedestrian pier. This event was awesome. We got to coordinate with some local environmental agencies and offer some public engagement with those who attended the event. So we had the Brevard Zoo present. We had the University of Florida's Brevard Extension Office with professional gardeners on staff, which they were awesome. They got to assist with any questions people may have had with our Thirty Tree Giveaway. So if anyone had questions about how to take care of the plants, soil type, water, what do I need to do? We had them present. And we also had the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council there as well. So moving on to another focus area, the Infrastructure and Energy Focus Area. We conducted a project in partnership with Ickley in Audubon, Florida, where we worked with a climate fellow that was a student from the University of, Stetson University. This was an effort to kind of collaborate with this student and give them experience with what government operations look like and kind of get an opportunity to look at municipal facilities and buildings' emissions in terms of greenhouse gases. So we did a 2021 Municipal Facilities and Buildings Emissions Report with them. The student reported back that forty-seven percent of emissions came from our vehicle fleet, followed by streetlights, traffic signs, building and facilities, and wastewater and water. I have this report on file, so if you'd like to see it, please feel free to request it from me. We also have an action. The city has applied for a seventy-six thousand dollar grant with the Department of Energy. This fulfills some of the objectives within the Infrastructure and Energy Focus because we are looking to focus on select municipal facilities to pursue retrofits. This will take place in partnership with the Justice Forty Initiative. So we're looking at municipal facilities that are in vulnerable spots within the city. So for example, the Harry T. Moore Social Services Center would be a building that we'd want to look for retrofits for. So we're looking to see where our energy inefficiencies are. We want to locate those through energy audits and then see how much money is left over from this grant to possibly implement retrofits. We also have the water focus area. So Public Works has been working on the 2020 through 2024, or 2040 Water Supply Facilities Work Plan. This work plan includes existing conditions analysis, future demand projections, identification of alternative water supply projects, identification of responsible organizations, identification of conservation and reuse practices, and coordination with the St. John's River Water Management District Supply Plan. So this was conducted last year. Public Works has this report on file. So if you would like to see that, please feel free to request that from me. We also are working on smart growth here in the city. So with our Titusville Tomorrow Project, the city submitted draft amendments to the comprehensive plan to direct growth to suitable areas that make wise use of existing infrastructure investments, create compact, connected, and complete neighborhoods, and facilitate access to services, amenities, and economic opportunities. We have not quite yet been able to touch on sustainable economy, but everything is a work in progress. So if this is an area we need to focus on, we'll get the ball rolling. But this area, we are looking at community-derived action items. So sustainable economy, we're looking at the development of a vibrant and diverse economy which supports workforce development, educational attainment, and entrepreneurship. So some of the bullet points here are potential areas we could focus on for future projects here at the city. So for example, encouraging a more circular economy, promote ecotourism, implement policies to use local vendors first, and things of that sort. So we haven't done anything yet to implement this, but it's on our radar for sure. So at this time, do you have any questions for me?
Questions? Remember Nelson's?
I have questions.
I have questions. Thanks, Abigail. I was reading the other day, and there is a grant from Biden for solar energy for low-income houses. Have you seen that?
I have not personally seen that grant open up, but I can certainly look into it.
Because I thought that would be great for our low-income houses to turn around and make them solar and allow them to spend money on food as opposed to electric. So if you would, I'd really appreciate it. And I understand, I don't know if you've heard it, but FEMA is supposed to redo the shoreline at Sandpoint Park. So you heard that? Yeah. Do we have a date for it? Do we know?
I am not sure. I'm not sure if this is a project that maybe Water Resources and Public Works is aware of, but I can reach out and ask. You said it was from FEMA?
It was from FEMA.
Okay.
They wanted to do a native shoreline along Sandpoint Park. And then, I just wanted to make a comment. Earth Day, I did talk to the people from the zoo, and I asked them, because they've been planting seagrass up here. And apparently, they said it's growing like wildfire. They do have cages over it. They are concerned that when they remove the cages, the manatees will think it's lunch. So, but apparently, it is growing very well up here, which is hopeful.
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, and in response to Member Nelson and the solar panels, or yes, we'll save the energy bill. But along with that, I would ask her to investigate because insurance is, will go sky-high on a lot of the low-income affordable housing packages because they are suggesting that before anyone put a solar panel on their home to check with their insurance company to make sure. So we have to keep that because that may be a... It's a good thing to save electricity, but that food, that money that one saved that goes out to, on electric bill, maybe going to the insurance company. So we want to make sure that there's a balance in that process.
Go ahead. Are you done?
I agree.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I had a solar panel guy come by the house. Of course, we get a lot of them. And I basically called the insurance company, and we did have some concerns. They didn't want to come out and see first. So we moved right along from that for now. But anyway, any other comments? Nope. Very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. City Manager, anything else on your side?
No, sir.
Petition's a request from the public.
Tony Schifolotropic Street. I'd like to respond to the Sustainability Plan. Rachel was a great person. She worked hard. She developed a great sustainability plan, and then she left, and nothing else has really been happening. I'm going to go over these objectives. One, one, increased citizen participation. Wow. Why don't we have the meetings of the TEC every month? Not just every other. The $135,000 planning grant to reevaluate, couldn't that money be used to do something that was identified priorly in some of the other studies that we've done to save the Indian River Lagoon? Number three, restore our shores with one small patch of native planting on the seawall at Sandpoint Park? That's going to restore the Indian River Lagoon? I don't think so. That's hardly anything to brag about. The Earth Day event, 30 trees? They were gone in two minutes. Big deal? While you're giving the developers the right to mow down hundreds of trees on an 80-acre or a 10-acre, at the same time, you're worried about planting trees? Climate 2021 study, what happened? What's been done? Has anything been done? I haven't seen anything from that study. Water. The public wants to know what is being done, and this city is doing a lot. Kevin is working very hard, excuse me, Mr. Cook is working very hard to do things. The public wants to know what's being done. Some of the workshops that Mr. Larisse had as an objective in his city standards was to have eight public workshops a year. That's been dropped now. But one of those public workshops could be to pull together a study about what's being done because even I, as smart as I am and the research I do, I don't understand about these outflows and lift stations and stuff. It would be nice to have a little workshop or a tour like we took of the facility. That opens your eyes to a lot of stuff, and you know what's going on. The people want to know. Smart growth. That's an oxymoron when it's joined with the Titusville Vision for Tomorrow, Brad. It's written and produced by Kim Lee Horn to the specifications desired by developers who are using Kim Lee Horn engineers and their concurrency studies for building and development in Titusville. That doesn't equate smart growth to me, especially when we're looking at West Titusville. And community-derived action resources. They wanted a makerspace, a commercial kitchen. That's a great idea. So many small businesses could have access to a commercial kitchen. Let's do something. And you're talking about ecotourism while destroying our wetlands and our natural habitat. What's left to come and see? Gun manufacturers and a concrete-crushing plant?
Thank you, Tony.
Just a thought. It would be, it would be nice if maybe Kevin would do a presentation. I know he's done one in the past. He's not here to defend himself, but we'll talk about him anyway, about the things that we have done to help the river during our 5:30 presentations. Possible?
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that and that there's, I hear all these things have been done and see, but we don't necessarily put them out there very well. I, where'd you go? I did think that water plant tour was really, that was a great idea. We need to play off of that. I, I thought that was eye-opening, as you said.
Maybe it's worth doing tours, small group tours, so they can see what's going on. People can see. Just an idea.
Yep, yep. Next up? I know this one. Hi, Katie.
Hi. Good afternoon. I was coming here to speak about the presentation that was just given. And I wanted to comment on the citizen engagement piece.
Which part? I'm sorry.
The citizen engagement piece.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that the community really loved was the community conversation, and I saw that that was canceled this year. In addition to that, we have a workshop coming up next week on the 30th. And not only is that not being videoed, but it hasn't really been put out too much. So I think that citizens don't really know too much about it. Also, I was at the TEC meeting a couple weeks ago, and it was really eye-opening because they had a lot of great ideas. And I've been watching the TEC meetings when they're recorded. But the last one was not recorded because you guys do every other. And there's a lot of really intelligent people on there that have great ideas. And a lot of times, their ideas go nowhere, unfortunately. And so why even have a board if, if we're not going to listen to their ideas? And they have some amazing ideas. So I would like to advocate for more interaction with them and just to film those, to, I'm sorry, to livestream those, those meetings. Next, I'd like to talk about the Earth Day. I have to agree with the last speaker giving out, you know, a handful of trees while we clearcut land for development. That's troubling. And then we're celebrating this bridge, and I'm sure you all smelt what I smelt. It was, you know, we really should have dredged that area before we built that bridge. And if, if the money wasn't there, it should have just waited. And something else troubling that I saw there was the amount of police presence. It was, it was a little bizarre. There were over a dozen police officers there staring at certain people and following people around. And it was just very bizarre because this was supposed to be a happy day, a good day. Ribbon cutting, we were giving out trees. There was supposed to be a lot of interaction between all the citizens and the city government. And then Titusville Tomorrow. I went to the meeting that Mr., I think Mr. Parrish is the one that, that led that. And it was, it was definitely upsetting to see what is planned for, for this area. People didn't seem very happy about it when I asked them what their opinions were. The fact that, I mean, we're going to have, it's going to look like New York City. And that's not why we live in North Brevard. So I hope that you guys consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Katie. Next up? I know this one, too. How are you?
Good evening. I'm good. How are you?
Good to see you.
It's great to see you. I haven't been here for a while. I have been busy with some of the other meetings, but have definitely been thinking about you.
Thank you.
I have started a new group, founded a new group called the Brevard Citizen, Brevard Care Citizens Coalition Online, and I'm posting about all things all over the county. And you guys are getting posted about tonight about some of the things that I'll be talking about now and at the, at the next meeting during petitions and requests. So I listened to the record, the presentation. Very nice job. I think that it all sounds reasonable. It sounds great, like you guys are, are moving Titusville forward, and we have plans, and we have citizen engagement. And, you know, I mean, it just looks so professional. And then there's this other part of Titusville that doesn't get, it doesn't get the dots connected. And that's what the two speakers prior to me were doing, were saying, we have this, it looks okay, but then where's the rest of the story? So I was also at this month's TEC meeting, and I recorded it because it was one of the six meetings, or five meetings a year that is not recorded. I appreciate that. And that's not citizen engagement. That's not informed citizenry. I've posted the three-minute clip that Mr. Larisse placed at the end of a three-and-a-half-hour meeting where you guys decided to split the baby. You decided to cut two meetings in half and only record half of the meetings. Completely unacceptable. I've personally been petitioning on that for over two years. And out of all the numerous requests that I've made to you, you guys have had your emails filled up at certain times with my ideas. That is the only one that has moved forward at all. And now I'm still recording the meetings. I personally recorded the meeting, and guess what? I'm going to be here next week because you also don't record the workshop next week, the strategic planning workshop, that you'll all be talking about your ideas for the city and in which the performance measures for the city will not be talked about, and which I brought up last year at the end of the meeting because you don't allow the public to speak at the beginning of the meeting. This is the split screen of Titusville. We say we do, community engagement, but where is it? I have a sign because there's people that are out here rallying because we're concerned. We want a connect-the-dots entire vision of Titusville. So the sign that I brought up for this portion of the meeting was the disconnect between the Environmental Commission is being thwarted. They spent part of their meeting talking about how powerless they feel. And now I'm glad that your consultant is going to meet with them, but I'm not convinced that that is going to help them feel like they're empowered in this city to fulfill their charter. They even talked about not, not being, changing the charter to not be a Treeboard, a Tree City USA because they can't fulfill their mission. That is not what we want for Titusville. How are we going to connect the dots? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
Why don't you get this out?
Stan, you good?
So you got, you got your, what do you call?
I don't, I don't know what you're saying. There you go.
Good evening.
Hi, Stan.
Good evening, Coach. Stan Johnson, professional engineer. I used to work here in the city for a few years, and now I got arrested. But that's, that's another story. So what I got to you today is that there's, there's a few comments I have on the sustainability issue. I thought Abigail did an excellent job there. But she wasn't responsible for what happened some, some time ago. And if we're, for sustainability, we're planning ahead. But I, I just, I just think, look, look at what happened to the Royal Oaks Golf and Country Club when it, when it folded. The city really blew it. Blew it big time. Ask any resident of Royal Oak. And he could have, the city could have bought that for a song, could have made a nice park out of it. That, that's one of the things I can see. I can see also in, in, we have, we have had trouble exposed is that the city has had a problem with the water, water supply with Fort Log virus, and that's been a secret for maybe 20 years. It's not good. That's not a good thing. So let's change, change subjects now. As I sent, I sent this to you. This has to do with the pollution in the river and so forth, and city denying, and city council denying sewage bills. So I'll go to something else because I don't have a lot of time. This is a, an email that I sent to the city manager and chief of police and to council. And I'm, I'm in a situation. The, the last sentence of this email says this. It says, "Please respond promptly, as you," that is city council and the city manager, "have, have limited my employment and service to the public for over five months." And that is, the subject of this is, is, I have in there, it says, is another, the subject is, "Another Request to Resolve, Understand Florida Statute 471.027." I put .27. It's 471.027. I've been an engineer for 48 years. I have that statute in my wallet. I use that on a routine basis. I contacted the city of Titusville to make sure everything was cleared for me to visit a site. Then on a routine basis, I did it this last October, and they didn't show up. So when I did show up, they arrested me. In other words, what they're doing, supposed to do, the Titusville Police is supposed to help me. Instead of helping me, they arrested me. Didn't make any sense at all. So I've asked for your help, and I got nothing. So I'm coming to you today, and I, and I came to you saying, "Please clear it so that I can work in the city of Titusville." The city of Titusville is the only government I know of in the state of Florida that prevents me from working there. The only city is the city of Titusville. Only city that stops professional engineers from working on sites within the city by the statute. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
I like your answers for that question.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Next up?
Good evening, City Council. Mayor?
How are you?
How are you all doing today?
Good. Name and address for the record.
John Moist, 3175 Diamond Road, Titusville, Florida.
Thank you.
So I've been working with several faith-based industries. I've been a volunteer with Under the Bridge Ministries, Hope for North Brevard, several other agencies here in the area, including some medical agencies here, too.
Thank you.
So I've been working with these agencies for over four years. I spent 24 years in the Coast Guard, and I have a heart for serving wherever I am. Additionally, I work with a couple organizations that procure and repair bicycles for the homeless and the needy. homeless, and the needy. I also provide meals on Fridays, Friday nights in support of those in need, along with several other servants, as we are all called to do, take care of those in need. We need more affordable housing here in Titusville. I know we have several, there's several agencies, um, Car Four, Apollo Gardens are trying to, um, build a complex here that will provide affordable housing. Um, it may eliminate, or at least it's gonna reduce the amount of homelessness that we have here on our streets, you know, and get some of our, give us, serve those people that we really need to serve. You know, most people ask, why would I do this? Well, it's because I can, I can serve, I have the hands and feet, you know, I have the ability to go out there and do this. You know, I can because I was called to by God. You know, I listen to God calling me out, imagine the city where we look out for each other, not look down. You know, unfortunately, I do see a lot, I'm out there a lot, and I do talk to people. You know, not all the people I meet want help, you know, not all of them want to listen, but they all do have a story to tell. You know, I chose, and I chose to listen to those stories. You know, I have a hope that one day, that we as a community can get back to the basics and serve, that we can see no longer, we can no longer see suffering on the streets, but a life recognized, anew in housing. And I know this is a big issue, I know it's not easily fixed, you know, I don't know if it'll, it's not gonna be fixed overnight, but it needs a voice, you know, or at least many voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Well said. Next up.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Monita Sassonett, Mrs. Colleen.
And I'm Colleen Rolle.
And this lady here takes care of all of the Medicare and the insurance signing up and everything for the elderly. Okay, so I have something, I am...
Well, we're working in, she lives at, uh, Royal Oak Community, it's a senior facility, and right now, we just found out that they were established with a new owner in September, and they raised their rent in September, then they also raised it again just now.
Yes.
And they took the low-income credit off, we just found out from Titusville, city of Titusville, that they only had a 20-year policy for giving them the funding for the low income.
Stop the clock a second. What facility?
Royal Oak, Royal Palms Senior Community.
Okay.
911 South Park Avenue.
I've been out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So she's written a letter she wants to address to you guys.
So, today we have a profound sense of urgency regarding a matter that directly affects the most vulnerable members of our community, our low-income seniors. The recent developments concerning the Royal Palms Senior Apartments demand immediately attention, not only as a housing issue, but also as a matter of preventing elder abuse. In 2007, when the state funded the construction of Royal Palms Senior Apartments, it was a beacon of hope for many low-income seniors in our area. The promise of affordable housing for the elderly population was a commendable initiative reflecting our collective commitment to ensure dignified living conditions for all residents, regardless of economic status. However, it has come to my attention that this noble vision is at risk of being undermined due to the concerning stipulation, the imposition of a time limit on the affordability of these apartments, specifically the requirement that the building remain low-income for only 20 years, with a provision for very low-income units for 15 of those years appears contradictory to the spirit of providing sustainable housing solutions for seniors. As the 20-year mark approaches, Royal Palms Seniors Apartments have been sold, as a crucial provision for very low-income units has been stripped away. The action jeopardizes the housing security of countless elderly and disabled individuals who rely on these affordable accommodations for their well-being and survival. What is particularly distressing, bleh, is that these individuals, many of whom are on fixed incomes, are now facing the threat of homelessness as a result of these policy shortcomings. Such circumstances constituent, constitute a form of elder abuse, wherein the most vulnerable members of our society are subjected to housing instability and potential displacement due to systemic failures. Moreover, the disparity in treatment between landlords and tenants in our current housing policies exacerbates this injustice. While there are no caps on rent increases or safeguards against arbitrary changes to lease agreements, stringent limitations are imposed on the duration of affordable housing initiatives. The imbalance not only perpetuates housing insecurity, but also exacerbates the vulnerability of our marginalized populations. The consequences of these policy shortcomings are already manifesting in our community with reports of seniors facing exorbitant rent hikes up to 50%. They threaten to push them into homelessness. There is an unintendedable situation that demands urgent intervention and reform. I implore you, as representative of our community and stewards of public welfare, to take decisive action to address this pressing issue. We need comprehensive and equitable housing policies that prioritize long-term affordability of housing seniors and protect tenants from exploitation of displacement.
All right, hold up right there, so...
Okay.
We have any, um, this is, I was out there eight months ago or so.
I'm back.
Well, and, and I will, and I will, but I'm trying to say, things have changed since then.
Yes, sir, they sold the building.
And now we have at least six seniors that are getting a 50% increase in their rent.
When, what's the timeframe on that, when did this?
They sold it in September, they gave them a rent increase in September, now they just gave them a rent increase last week, and they said it starts May 1st, so they didn't even give them a 30-day notice. And the one gentleman who's got a 50% increase is a disabled elder, 1938, he was born, and his apartment is falling apart. No repairs done in years.
We have another lady upstairs, her apartment's been wrecked when the hurricane came through, okay, they did some work in there, it's been a year since she's had any work done in her apartment. Her bedroom, she can't sleep in her bedroom because they won't finish the repairs, and she's on HUD, she gets a voucher, and they're not doing anything.
All right, hold up, do we have any information, Brad, somebody, or do we have any history with this that we know about?
If I may.
Please, please, you're the, you're the expert.
If, if I may address, ma'am, just like the Coast Guardman said, that housing, uh, is an issue.
Right.
Affordable housing is, uh, something that has to be built, and developers negotiate with, with government to build a percentage of affordable housing for tax credits and, and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
And when the government set those rules, they have time limits on them, so that the developers can invest in building affordable housing. So, the issue is, is that when that time limit runs out, and that is not gonna just include the home that you're speaking of, it's gonna include a whole vast amount...
Yeah, they've told us it's been happening all over.
...of affordable housing everywhere in the country.
Mm-hmm.
And it is, because we, that homelessness and housing affordability is an issue, it is being addressed, but as far as the time limit that is set by a tax credit, or something, uh, uh, housing, homes that are built for that purpose, we in the city have nothing to do with that.
That's right.
Because those are laws that are set by the federal government.
Well, it's said Brevard County did that funding.
Right.
It said Brevard County did the funding for the 15%.
But it doesn't matter whether, but the money came from the state through Brevard County, and then may have been allocated to the city for, for, uh, to be expended, but the, the rules and regulations that are set forth by those are all set by the state and the federal government.
So how do we make a change? How do we set the laws? How do we get a change?
And y'all are our government here in Titusville.
I can't address that, but I can tell you where to go to, uh, to, uh, to address the problem, you need to address the problem at the state and the federal government level.
Been there, he tells us to call 211, and they give us that a year outdated of low-income housing.
And it says, you've got this emergency housing, but it's...
All of that is, all of that is locally operated, we can't, when we get funding from the state and from the federal government, that funding comes with requirements and limitation, and we can't do anything about it. If we wanna bring some dollars into our city for affordable housing, to get those dollars, we have to abide by the rules and regulations and laws that they come to our city with.
But then why haven't we been abiding by those rules and regulations? Why do we not have the affordable housing? Are we not abiding by those rules?
You do have affordable housing, ma'am, the affordable housing was allocated for 20 years, but after that is done, then it's...
It gentrifies the community, and then the seniors that are there will no longer be able to afford it.
Right, you're gonna have tents all over the place.
I understand, I understand all that you're saying.
Do you have anything for the ones that are gonna be homeless now, within the next month?
In a month?
I, I can tell you this, that I and others throughout this county, throughout this state, are working on those issues, but they're not easy issues to resolve.
Are these all through the, and he's our, our low-income housing expert, he's spent his whole life doing this, so that's why he's kinda given us some answers here. Um, so this is all comes, trickles down from federal government, federal funding?
All of, when we get dollars allocated to the county or to the city, the, the qualifications for allocating those dollars are already part of the package.
Okay, well, through the fair housing market, they said that you're allowed to put, the local government is allowed to...
Right.
...put laws and regulations on housing rental caps on the way they're raising the rent, they're raising it a 50% at a time.
Uh, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that that's, uh, that's totally accurate.
Well, they did it in Miami, and they're, they're protesting in Orlando right now, but we need a local government.
Well, I do know what, the biggest problem we have right now is what you're, you guys are facing right now.
Right.
Cause we can talk about possibility of making laws, and what we can and what we can't do, and what the federal government can allow us to do, et cetera, and the 20 years has run out. Uh, I would, I don't have the answer, but I definitely am going to, I've been there before, and I'll go again, to see what, I mean, this whole thing could be handled better than it's being handled with or without a new law.
Absolutely.
So...
And we talk about sustainability, why wouldn't we put laws in place to prevent it from happening in the future?
Well, I'm not saying we won't, but that's not gonna help your people getting tossed tomorrow.
I understand that, but we do wanna prevent the 96 units from being, in three years, being kicked out.
Let's see, attorney, you have anything legally you can add to that?
No, I do agree with, what's been said, you know, when we receive the money, there are limits, there are contracts, and once, and you abide by those contracts. You don't renegotiate, you can't go back, once that money's been spent, they abide by the contract.
So we're...
But also, at the state level, we're still seeing more inability to have rent controls, and them limiting our ability to have rent controls. I'd be glad to provide those laws to you next week, and of course, I don't have them tonight, but I do agree, it's, it's an issue, and we are limited in what we can do.
Well, I, personally, with, I, personally, I wanna talk to the people who are running the show over there, that's, that's what I'm gonna try to do.
And, and Donna does a very good job, she's our property manager, but it's not her that's doing it, it's this new company.
So she can, she can explain to me exactly what's happening.
Absolutely.
All right, well, you might see me there tomorrow.
Absolutely.
And they're willing to talk to you too, cause they, they're willing to show you their apartments that are falling apart, and not, nothing being repaired with a 50% increase.
It's not been painted or carpet changed in over 20 years.
You have, uh, I know the Royal Palm, but you have a specific address or no?
911 South Park Avenue.
How many again?
911, 911. If you need help.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you so very much.
Ooh, that sounds like it. Good evening. Sir, how are you?
Great, how you doing?
Name and address for the record.
My name is Kevin Jeffrey, my address is 6075 Windover Way. You know, it said that, uh, as Rome was burning, Nero, Nero fiddled. I've talked to people all over Titusville, and I've been here for about 24 years now, and I see that there's a disengagement from the government and the people. You guys, and I don't know if you, you may already know this, you're just representing the people, right? The people are the government, it's not staff, it's not you, it's the people.
Absolutely.
And the people are getting a little frustrated that you're not listening to them. I hear it all over. They're getting a little frustrated that you're rubber stamping everything that's going through, and that you're not concerned about what's going on. So they have the right of the ballot, and they're gonna make change, and I do hear winds of change blowing through Titusville, and I think that there's gonna be a change. I don't think that you understand how frustrated the people are with your decisions, with their aloofness, with the inability to actually make things available to them, the hiding of things, the inability to put, uh, make act, make everything accessible for them, the people are going frustrated. They're gonna make a change, and they have the opportunity to do that, but they shouldn't do that, they've entrusted into you, a public trust, to be, to represent them on their behalf. You're running an endgame around staff, you listen to some unelected bureaucrats more than you listen to the people. I mean, I can go back with the sustainability plan, you can go back through all of this, a lot of the votes here, as I've seen it, are five to nothing, just rubber stamp, rubber stamp. Where's the representation of the people? Where? Where's the concern for the people? Where? Where's the access for the people? It's their government, it's not yours. You're just representing them, and I would hope that from this point on, you will listen to what the people are saying. And when, when someone votes, when, when the citizens of Titusville vote over 80% for the Clean Water Act, and you guys decide, oh, no, no, we know what's best for you, right? Then we're gonna come back and we're gonna undermine the will of the people! This is unbelievable behavior, and it shows that you're completely out of touch.
Thank you. Next up.
Hello. I'm Chuck Sheridan, I'm a candidate for the Florida Senate, first time we'll have it, Senate district doesn't take in another county, but I wanted to speak on this woman's concern with the affordable housing. You're absolutely correct, I was a general contractor for several developers in the late 90s, we did the affordable housing tax credit programs, which had a 20- or 25-year program that people were, they were sold on the stock market, the tax credits, and I said, this is gonna be a problem in about 20 years, and now it's a problem across the country, not just here, but across the country. And, uh, I'm hoping I can do something with it, but it's, it's a big problem, and it needs to be addressed, and, and, and I hope I can have the chance to, to help fix it, because I feel like I was part of the problem that started it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
My name's Trey Gordon, 3986 Tangle Drive. Uh, thank you all, just wanna thank you all for your service, I know how sacrificial. I go to a lot of meetings, but nobody has longer agendas than you all, and, um, you face a lot of hard things. One of the things I wanted to talk to you about, I come as a concerned citizen, but also as the chair of the North Brevard Coalition of Human Services, which consists of about 80 different social service agencies and churches, uh, businesses. I also come as the founder of Hope for North Brevard, and I want to speak to you about the affordable housing crisis, um, that's affecting our most vulnerable populations, and crisis situations always create two things, opportunities, um, and they also reveal character. And so we can either react in fear, or we have opportunities to be great. And the question becomes, what does it mean to be great? What does a great society look like? What does a great community look like? And I'll just give you two of my heroes, one is Jesus, who would say, how you treat the least of these, that's what greatness, that's how you define it. The second would be Confucius, who said, great societies care, every person in that community is cared for and protected, and so those can give us some guidance. One of the questions is, what are we to do with our vulnerable populations, particularly our homeless? I do wanna make you aware of House Bill 1365, which is coming, uh, soon, and that, again, is removing homeless, um, from our public streets and parks, um, and, again, there's two parts to that law, and the other part is temporary shelter, which we don't have. And so the question becomes, where are they to go? Now, one of those solutions is right before us, is the Apollo Gardens Supportive Housing Project, which is 81 one-bedroom units, starting in the mid 500s, okay? That's affordable. We, we throw that word around like candy, but let's be honest about what people can really afford. This project will be focused on the disabled, elderly, and the homeless. The one part that I want to under, help you understand is the backstory of, um, Car Four, is that we invited them to come to our community. This is a nonprofit community development agency, which they're very rare to get these tax credits, they're not just a regular developer that just wants to make money, they're actually in the business of developing nonprofit, um, affordable housing.
Finish that one up for me.
Yep. And they're an answer to prayer, and so, part of their grant, the way they get funded is through these grants, and the grants are on a point system, cause I think a lot of people in our community have questions as to why this Miami-based group came to our town, but it's that they were looking, we were inviting them to come, cause we're in desperate need of affordable housing, true affordable housing, but their grants are based on a point system, and point systems are looking for particular projects that have a certain size, that are close to food, uh, grocery, you know, grocery stores, bus routes, hospitals, um, schools, and so that's how they came about the property that they acquired.
We need to wrap that up, brother.
And that's the goal, where you... Where you could help with that is there's community pushback as to the location. And part of that concern is the road access to Barna, and I think you could be of help to them there in championing that project, because we need to see it. I think we should listen to the citizens as well as the need for affordable housing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up. All right, we, we will hit the, right, you good? We will start the next one at 10 till. I can say quarter till, but we never get on time, so let's try to be 10 till. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.